Good morning to all. Mr. President, Vice President, and everyone. Let us start. I hereby call the fifth day of the fifth regular session of the 23rd Congress to order. And before we take a moment of silence, when we do our silent prayers, please keep in mind our second president of the nation passed away a couple of days ago. And if you will keep him and the family in our prayers. So may we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. And before we take roll call, I just wanted to take this time and welcome back Chairman Figuer. He was away from us last session and he's back to join us this session. So I am and I hope everyone is grateful for that. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Apel Alfonso?
Amen. Caserlilia May.
Senator Arrethos? Senator Asher?
You have my lap.
Senator Christian? Senator Figuer? Senator Collin? Senator Conman?
Yes, good morning.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Amen.
Senator Marar?
Yes, my.
Senator Nemea?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalo?
Amen.
Senator Segura?
Yes, good morning.
Senator Urusmal? Speaker Moses?
Amen.
Mr. Speaker, 12 members are present.
With that, we have a quorum to transact business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number four, Appointment of Committee to Wait on the President.
Thank you. I hereby appoint Chairman Limia from Chuk to be chairman of the Committee to Wait. Member Chairman Urusmal, Floor Leader Lawrence, and Madam Chair Segura to be members of the Committee to Wait. Please, Chairman, consult with the President when you get the chance to get the time and venue of the meeting. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number five, Presidential Communications. We're in receipt of three of them and they are numbers 23-427 to number 23-429.
Thank you. Chairs and members, please take note there are some very important communications that need our attention. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now on item number six, FSM Supreme Court Communications. None, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, Member Communications. None also, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, Departmental Communications. We are in receipt of numbers 23-79 to number 23-87.
Thank you. Please assign those, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're on item number nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications. We have one and it's number 23-32.
Thank you. And members and those who are observing who may wish to participate in the upcoming election, that communication is now public record. So everybody can have a chance to have a look. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on item number 10, State Communications. We have one and it's number 23-47.
Please assign that. Next item.
Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications. None, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item 12, Municipal or Town Communications. None also, Mr. Speaker. Item 13, Foreign Government Communications. We are in receipt of numbers 23-94 to number 23-98.
Next item.
Item 14, Miscellaneous Communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day. Point of privilege. State your point, Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, esteemed members of the 23rd FSM National Congress. I wish to rise on a point of privilege to once again welcome and recognize our distinguished guests and all who are here with us this morning. First, I would like to begin by welcoming and recognizing the President of the Federated States of Micronesia, His Excellency Wesley W. Semena. The Vice President of the Federated States of Micronesia, Honorable Aaron B. Palik. I wish to also recognize and welcome the members of the President's Cabinet, national organizations and agencies who are here with us today. Now, I can see that there are some other important folks from the other states, I think from the state of Chuk, but I will leave it to our colleagues, my colleagues from the Chuk delegation to kindly introduce them. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, point of privilege.
State your point, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Tiro Vairo, Mr. Pucuawi Benisin. I join the floor leader to acknowledge the presence of our President, Wesley Sibila, and Vice President and for everyone who are present here. But before I move on, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to our for His Excellency, Mr. President, for sending a big group to Machuro for the triennial aid conference for the women and also to join the Pacific Island Forum for Women's Leaders. It was a great meeting and we learned a lot from that meeting. Pakuki Riso Jabur, Mr. President and Speaker, for sending us out. And I would like to also introduce some important people in the gallery who are from our islands in the southern Nahuas. Our senator in our region is Mr. Nelson Steven. Can we give him a round of applause? The others who are with him are Mr. Maeta Nikutzu, Consulman of Uman, Akiripa Eroth, Vice Chairman of Uman Council. Mr. David Petro, Chairman of Council of Traditional Chiefs on Uman Island. And the last one is Mr. Timres Teresio, Special Assistant to Uman Island and is also the husband of our lady, the mayor of Perem. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Yes, we always welcome our people who want to, our citizens who want to join us in this gallery. So thank you very much for that introduction. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the order of the day, we have item number 15, Standing Committee Reports. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item 16, Special Committee Reports. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker. Item 17, For Assignment of Measures and Communications, candidly refer to referral sheet number 23-59.
Chairs and members, please take note of the referral sheet. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is item number 18, Unfinished Business. None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 19, Bill Calendar. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 20, Resolution Calendar. None also, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 21, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
If you have any measures to introduce, please pass them forward to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 22, Miscellaneous Business, Mr. Speaker.
Any miscellaneous business? Chairman Limia? Do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Honorable members of Congress, I rise today to address urgent issues that demand our immediate action. We stand at a critical juncture in our nation's history. The challenges before us, climate change, rising sea levels, and severe weather are not abstract threats. They are pressing realities that jeopardize our islands, our communities, and our future. Recent findings reveal a troubling decline in our fishing revenue, a vital economic lifeline. A 2% drop from FY22 to FY23, followed by a 4% decline from FY23 to 24, signals more than just financial losses. It represent a diminishing resource for sustainable development and a precursor to economic instability. The average annual reduction of 3% is a clarion gall for immediate intervention. Combounding these economic challenges is the erosion of our human capital, our nation's true strength. The rising rates of health issues and the art-praying outmigration of our citizens threaten our collective future. Investing in our people, empowering them through educational skills, skills and opportunities is essential for sustainable development. It strengthen our infrastructure, enhances food security, and equips a workforce ready to implement policies that drive our national goals. In the face of these mounting challenges, we must adopt a wall of government approach that transcends political divide. The issues we face are interconnected and our responses must reflect that reality. Every policy we create and formulate, every resource we allocate must urgently address these existential threats. The time for action is now. Let us commit to a resilient future where our economy strives and our people are healthy and hopeful. Together, we can confront climate change, refitalize our communities, and strengthen our national identity. Let us rise to this occasion, not just as leaders but as guardians of our land and stewards of our people. The legacy we leave behind and for future generation depends on the choices we make today. Together, we can fuel the prider, sustainable future for the Federated States of Micronesia. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Limia, for that. Any further miscellaneous business? If none, Speaker, Chairman Urusmal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First, I wish to acknowledge the information that you share with this body relating to the passing of our second president of the nation, Preston John Hagelinaga. At the moment, there is still no decision as to what's going to be, what's going to happen with the remains. Discussion are ongoing as to whether the remains would go back home through Punepi, through here, or go to his home island, Europek, through trip to Yap and then out. I'm sure the administration will be informed as to what the final decision as the families being spread over distance from Hawaii to Yap here and back home. It's very difficult for them to reach consensus on what action they should take. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, I join the others in welcoming our President, His Excellency Preston Wesley Semena and the Vice President. And also, in the same vein, I would like to welcome our Chairman of Ways and Means Committee who had joined us this morning after a long period of medical treatment in Hawaii. Is absent from the special session was because of the treatment in Hawaii. And I am very grateful and thankful to the Almighty for allowing our friend, our colleagues, Black Galik, back to FSM and to Punepi. Thirdly, Mr. Speaker, I wish to note the issues as raised by Chairman Nemea relating to actions that not only Congress but the collective efforts of the FSM government should take to address those issues as he pointed out. I hope we don't just talk about the problems and the issues but also to address and come up with ways and means to address the problems. If it takes more times for us to stay and meet with executive and among ourselves to reach some decisions as to how we go about improving the health of our people, providing good, solid education for our children and works for our citizens so they remain here in FSM. Let's come up with some ideas to do that. Through our times is very critical and the challenges are very, very difficult. But we must have the courage and the leadership to meet them and to talk and reach some consciences as to how we go forward. And with that, I am a bit confused as this is the fifth day of our session and it's the first, I mean, fifth day and we're appointing Committee to Wait. But I understand because of lack of quorum when the session was open on the 11th, 11? On the 12th, as mandated by laws, we are here and this is the first time that we have a full house more than what you have been operating on for from Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I'm very happy to be back and I hope and pray that we do some serious discussion on the issues and other issues that is facing our nation, including working together with the states to come up with good, affordable, and achievable ideas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Urusmal. Always informative and I'm sure members have taken note of both statements that have been made on the floor. Any more miscellaneous business? Any more miscellaneous business? Next item, Chief Clerk.
Speaker. Point of privilege.
State your point.
Thank you, Speaker. I apologize. I didn't realize that another important person just is here with us today. So I'd like the body to please recognize and welcome the Executive Director of the Western and Central Pacific Fisheries Commission, or better known as Tuna Commission. Let's all please welcome the Executive Director, Mrs. Rea Moss Christian.
Thank you for the introduction, Chief Clerk. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on item number 23, Announcements.
Short recess. Chairman Limia. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, we're on announcements. So Chairman Figuer, any announcement? Madam Chair Abelio Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have no announcements at the moment.
Chairman Christian.
No announcement.
Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe there's a request for the Standing Committee of Chanco to meet tomorrow at 1:00 P.M.
Thank you. Chairman Limia.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have two announcements to make. First of which is to let the committee on R and D that we will have a budget yearing on Wednesday at 1:00 P.M. And that is to cover the budget for the Banking Commission and Insurance Commission. And I've also consulted with His Excellency President Semena on the Committee to Wait on the President time. And we've agreed that we will have it at 11:30 A.M. this morning. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Speaker. On behalf of Ways and Means and our Chairman Figuer, just to remind everyone that the Ways and Means Committee will have a yearing on Wednesday, 8:30. But everyone is invited. Thank you.
Chairman Urusmal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Education, I am informed happily that there is hardly any work for the committee because our report has already been adopted on the budget for FY25. We only have to read and I mean, come up with ways and means to address the adjustment in our budget for FY25. So we're being ranked out and stormed out until further notice. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Chairman Urusmal. And I I hope we can move on our budgets. Time is of the essence. Madam Chair Segura, any announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement.
Vice Chairman Marar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of Madam Chair Coleman, kindly honorable members of HMSA look out for our schedule for positive yearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor Leader. Well, Vice Speaker, Floor Leader Lawrence. Any announcements and your usual motion?
No announcement, Speaker. I move that Congress stands in recess until tomorrow morning at 10:00.
There is that motion, but I would like to ask if members can meet in the Members Lounge before the Committee to Wait goes down to meet the President. And if no objection, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands at recess until tomorrow at 10:00 A.M.